All right, this is the Village of Peatone Board Meeting for June 9th, 2014. We begin by rising to say the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Riker.
Here.
Mr. Hupkey.
Here.
Mr. Wicker.
Here.
Mr. Heck.
Here.
Mr. Callahan.
Here.
Mr. Forsyth.
Okay, let the record show that all trustees are present. We have a forum and we may conduct official business. First order of business, we have the minutes of the May 27, 2014 Regular Village Board Meeting, and we also have the May 27, 2014 Public Hearing, Minutes of the Public Hearing on the Appropriations Ordinance. Do we need two separate motions out of that?
No, as long as everyone's comfortable doing them together.
Okay. I will entertain a motion to approve the May 27 Regular Village Board Meeting Minutes and the public hearing on the appropriations ordinance minutes for May 27 also.
Motion.
Second. Motion by trustee Forsyth, second by trustee Hupkey to approve both the minutes of the May 27, 2014 Regular Village Board Meeting and the minutes of the May 27, 2014 Appropriations Ordinance Public Hearing. Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Forsyth.
Yes.
Mr. Hupkey.
Yes.
Mr. Riker.
Yes.
Mr. Wicker.
Yes.
Mr. Heck.
Yes.
Mr. Callahan.
Yes.
Mr. Forsyth.
Okay, motion carries. Now, trustees, you have in your packet the bills, and I need to call your attention to the bills. First, we have the payroll for pay period ending May 24, 2014, in the amount of $45,097.78. Under accounts payable in the general fund, we have bills totaling $101,42.78. And I call your attention to check number 29803 in the amount of $22,900 to Terry's Board. This is the squad that we talked about during the capital improvements and the budget proposal that was available to us at less than the state bid price because it's a 2013 model. And at that time, trustees, there was a consensus that to move forward with it. It is now in your, this packet of bills, and moving forward with it gives official approval to that. Now, in the water and sewer funds, we have bills totaling $87,483.10. Grand total for all of these funds is $188,625.80. I will entertain a motion to pay the bills as presented. I make the motion we paid it out.
Second.
Motion by trustee Wicker, second by trustee Riker to pay the bills as presented. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Wicker.
Yes.
Mr. Riker.
Yes.
Mr. Hupkey.
Yes.
Mr. Heck.
Yes.
Mr. Callahan.
Yes. Okay, motion carries, and the bills are paid as noted. Public comment or, or questions? Anybody from the public for any non-agenda item? In other words, if you're on the agenda later, just wait till then. Okay, hearing done. I'm going to move forward to the reports of the police chief. Chief, anything? Any updates besides the gates outside?
Uh, no updates.
Okay.
Railroad's en route.
Yeah. Engineers report. Troy, any updates on anything?
The only thing I have is we resubmitted the intersection design study for the, yeah, the stopway project. I'm talking about again, so it's back in there, yes.
And that, that's kind of, they had some questions, we had some answers, and we've updated. Now they have to basically say they approve the answers that we came up with for the questions they had. All right. Under old business, there is, under new business, we have a resolution regarding fence variance at 536 Leyden, Linden Avenue, I'm sorry. And...
Gave an incentive us to file an application for a fence variance. The purpose of the variance is to permit a six-foot privacy fence to be installed on portions of their property. State of purpose of the fence is defense in the backyard due to vandalism. Fence will be installed at the locations highlighted on the platid survey. The north and south side yards containing system fences installed by neighbors. So basically, this is to variances specifically for a privacy fence. And they are present in the audience. If you have any questions.
Sure. Trustees, do we have any questions?
I motion to accept the variance.
Second. Okay, this would be Resolution dash R-14 dash R-02. A variance for, to put the six-foot privacy fence across the deck and the front of, as noted in the, the plan that they supply. So it's motion by trustee Forsyth, seconded by trustee Riker to approve Resolution 14 dash R-02. Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Forsyth.
Yes.
Mr. Riker.
Yes.
Mr. Hupkey.
Yes.
Mr. Wicker.
Yes.
Mr. Heck.
Yes.
Mr. Callahan.
Yes. Okay, variance granted.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck with it. Next item is Resolution relative to endorsing the 2014-15 Five-Year Capital Improvement Plan.
The task is a resolution endorsing the five-year program capital improvement plan. Work elements in this plan reflect comments staff and elected officials have received from the public, staff submissions of corresponding input provided by the village board at the public work session. CIP also reflects programs and projects approved in the FY14 operating budget appropriations ordinance. Plan incorporates projects in the street, water, sewer, police, and administration departments. Examples of projects include street paving, purchase of police squad cars, emergency generator at Wilmington Road List Station, engineering for the Route 50 traffic light, improvements at the wastewater treatment plant, Wilmington Road sidewalk, and squad computers. CIP is a planning document, not an appropriation ordinance. In and of itself, it does not authorize any projects and is subject to review and revision at later dates. It does, however, provide a general working plan for the next five years regarding programs and capital improvement.
Okay, this would be Resolution 14 dash R-03 endorsing the fiscal year 2014 to 2018 capital, the capital improvement plan. Do I have a motion to adopt Resolution 14 dash R-03?
Motion.
Second.
Motion by trustee Forsyth, seconded by trustee Heck to approve the five-year capital improvement plan, Resolution 014 dash R-03. Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Forsyth.
Yes.
Mr. Heck.
Yes.
Mr. Callahan.
Yes.
Mr. Wicker.
Yes.
Mr. Hupkey.
Yes.
Mr. Riker.
Yes.
Okay, motion carries, and that becomes our guide for the next five years, reviewable every year as we have in the past. I'm going to use the chair's prerogative and move an item from lower on the agenda, dealing with the comprehensive plan, up to this point as the village planner, Mr. Levitt, is with us this evening, and in deference to his time.
Thank you. The plan is substantially unchanged from that which was presented to you at the committee of the whole meeting a couple weeks ago. It went to the Planning and Zoning Commission subsequent to the committee of the whole. It was passed unanimously without amendment, and that is basically what is before you tonight. So if you have any questions on the planning, the land use, or the engineering, either I or Troy are available to answer any of your questions.
Okay, this would be ordinance dash 14 dash 05. I gotta get my pages ready, so I'll pull this one correctly. All right. An ordinance approving and adopting the official comprehensive plan of the Village of Peatone. Trustees, any questions?
Motion.
Okay, motion by trustee Forsyth.
Second.
Seconded by trustee Hupkey to approve ordinance 14 dash 05, an ordinance adopting the comprehensive, the official comprehensive plan for the Village of Peatone. Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Forsyth.
Yes.
Mr. Hupkey.
Yes.
Mr. Riker.
Yes.
Mr. Wicker.
Yes.
Mr. Heck.
Yes.
Motion carries, and... Very much. Thank you, Steve, for helping us with that project. Now we'll go back to the regular order of things, which is ordinance enacting and adopting a supplement to the code of ordinances for the Village of Peatone. George?
Periodically, ordinances which have been adopted by the village board are sent to American Legal Publishing Corporation, who prepares a supplement to the village code of ordinances. It also prepares the supplements to the, to the online code that's found on the village webpage. This ordinance adopts Supplement 2014 S-30. It isn't adding any ordinances, it basically codifies those that we've passed in the last three months.
Okay, this would be ordinance 14 dash 06, an ordinance enacting and adopting a supplement to the code of ordinances for the Village of Peatone. Is there a motion to adopt ordinance 14 dash 06?
Some.
Second. Motion by trustee Wicker, seconded by trustee Forsyth to adopt ordinance 14 dash 06, an ordinance enacting and adopting a supplement to the code of ordinances for the Village of Peatone. Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Wicker.
Yes.
Mr. Forsyth.
Yes.
Mr. Callahan.
Yes.
Mr. Heck.
Yes.
Mr. Riker.
Yes.
Mr. Hupkey.
Yes.
Motion carries, and the supplement becomes part of the official ordinance. Next item, the ordinance related to prevailing wage. George?
Each year, the village board is required by state law to adopt prevailing wage standards for designated trades. Current prevailing wage rates for Will County were downloaded from the Illinois Department of Labor website, but these rates are like standards recognized by the Department of Labor and not open to revision or amendment.
And trustees, this is something we are, we, every elected group in the state of Illinois has to approve every June as part of the requirements to meet the guidelines for any state grants or other things that may come our way. So, is there a motion? This would be ordinance 14 dash 07, the prevailing wage ordinance, prevailing wage rate, rate, I'm sorry. Is there a motion to adopt this?
Don't move. Second.
Motion by trustee Wicker, seconded by trustee Riker to adopt the prevailing wage rate, ordinance 14 dash 07. Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Wicker.
Yes.
Mr. Riker.
Yes.
Mr. Hupkey.
Yes.
Mr. Forsyth.
Yes.
Mr. Callahan.
Yes.
Mr. Heck.
Yes. Motion carries, and we have officially adopted that. That will be published in the newspaper shortly.
Yes, well, the, the notice part, not the ordinance.
Yeah, the legal notice.
It says legal notice.
Right. And as I said before, you will notice every public body doing that throughout the whole state. All right, that's all of the items on the agenda. We come down to correspondence, communications, petitions, and I want to make some comments. I had the opportunity, and Mr. Riker was there too, on Sunday, the Main Street Dance Academy that we, we have here did their annual student showcase. They've been doing it for seven years. Now, I've been a parent of daughters who have done those, and I will tell you, this had to be the most professional-looking, I mean, we still had the little kindergarten kids, aged girls, but they were doing the Rockettes. It was just unbelievable. And I wanted to, to publicly commend the, the folks at the Main Street Dance Studio because this is truly an outstanding program of this community, one that you wouldn't expect to find in a town of our size. It far exceeds many that I've seen in much larger communities, and I would encourage you trustees, if the opportunity comes up to, to see these kids perform again, to take full advantage of it. It's really, really an outstanding program. Rich, I don't know if you want to say anything, because you've been the, the last seven years of the program.
And it gets better every year.
Yeah.
They do, Gary and Jean do, oh, their daughters, actually. They do a tremendous job. I got to kick out the older ones, you know.
Yeah, when they got it, when they were, they were in their Christmas kind of outfits, and they, they got into a line. Can you imagine five and six-year-olds doing the Rockettes chorus line? They were pretty close. But they did that, plus they did some other things in there. It, it was just, it was really nice, and I wanted to add that. Do we have anything coming due that we need to remind people of?
Nope, not yet. We will be nailing at the end of month the new water bills to the last quarter.
So that's, so nothing to do, this is good.
This is good.
All right. Any announcements? I'm looking at Noreen, because she has something on the library.
Summer reading program registration's going really great, if you haven't signed up yet. It's for adults too, adults teens and kids. Please come to the library, sign up, we have a lot of these programs. We have one tonight, it's spa night at the library.
Spa night?
Yeah, till 8:30, so you run up there and...
Wait a minute, how do you have spa night at the library?
You read about it. You have to go see.
[laughing].
You know, they're doing things like hand lotions, things like that, and different kinds of, yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, relaxation techniques, that kind of stuff.
Okay, there you go.
Yeah.
We could all use that. All right, any trustees, any questions, comments? Hearing done, we have completed our business. I will entertain a motion to adjourn the June 9, 2014 Village of Peatone Board meeting.
Motion.
Motion by trustee Hupkey.
Second.
Seconded by trustee Riker. Forsyth, as I'm looking at this side of the room, to adjourn the June 9, 2014 Village of Peatone Board meeting. Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Hupkey.
Yes.
Mr. Forsyth.
Yes.
Mr. Callahan.
Yes.
Mr. Heck.
Yes.